Welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Meeting of the Board of Education for Wednesday, June 26, 2024. I am happy that I'm Mike Cusack. I'm happy to call this meeting to order. Let me see if we have any, um, we have an action we need to approve our agenda. Would anyone like to?
I'm over approval of the agenda.
We have one. Do I have a two? And we got a second from Trustee Howard. So let us vote.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, Trustee Whitaker, Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams. Yes, I'm a yes. Um, Ms. Kair, have we any public comment regarding closed session items? We do not have any public comments regarding closed session items. And with that, we shall go to item one E, and that is to recess to closed session. We're back. Uh, welcome to the open session of the Castro Valley Unified School District, meeting of the Board of Education for Wednesday, June 26, 2024. We are now back in open session, and we need to report on the action taken in closed session. Well, the first item says to report out, and I don't have anything to report out yet. But we do need to do three C to take action in open session of closed session items. And there are two items that we need to move forward with. Um, so should I just rep?
I will, I will make a motion to approve expulsion pursuant to education code 48917 case 042324.
Do I have a second? Okay, with a first and a second, let's take a vote. Trustee Sarah Moon, Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Uh, it is approved four to zero.
Five. Five.
Five to zero.
Five.
I can count. Five to zero.
I would like to make a motion to, um, read admission pursuant to education code 48916A case 92223.
I'll second that.
Excellent. Uh, Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes. That's five, zero, yes. Thank you. That's, uh, we've, we've taken those actions. Uh, our next item is for Trustee Howard to read our district mission statement, which I always like to point out is aligned with our strategic directions, which you find above us here in the board room. Trustee Howard.
I guess I said that without the mic.
Well, we, we heard you. Thank you, Trustee Howard. Um, and now with that, let me go to public comment instructions. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to submit blue form on the back table or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment, and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. All the, at the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. The meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment that can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. And with that, um, Superintendent Amadi, I don't know if you want me to invite up our special guest in the audience and take some personal privilege.
Have you?
I, 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 I see that there's a new principal for Canyon Middle School in the audience. We'd like to welcome Mr. Hendy. Welcome, Mr. Hendy. Um, you, you can tell us about yourself. You can lecture us. You can read some poetry, do some interpretive dance, whatever you want to do. Welcome.
I thought through, um, really appreciate the opportunity to, to lead the school and, uh, you giving me your, your trust in doing so. I've been in Castro Valley. This is, uh, finished up my 12th year. And each year I become more and more committed to the, to the mission and the vision that the school has to offer. One thing I really prided myself in throughout my entire educational career is, um, when I'm working with students, uh, sometimes figuratively, sometimes literally, I like to open the doors of opportunities for them. So sometimes like, hey, Mr. Hendy, can you open the door? And, um, so as I'm taking on more and more responsibility, uh, one thing you may or may not know is you get a few more keys with that. So now that you're principal, you actually have a lot more keys figuratively and literally to help students, uh, meet their goals. And I know, um, the work I've done with MTSS, PBIS, RTI, these are all things that are really going to, um, be helpful. Working with the students and families and staff there at Canyon. So I'm super excited for the, for the work that, that we're all about ready to, to do there. And I'm also very grateful for Ms. Wong for, for leaving the school in such a wonderful place for a change of leadership. The, the staff is really ready, ready to work with me. So thank you. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I'm, I hope you brought your running shoes with you and maybe you'll do the Canyon Mile.
The Canyon Mile at some point.
Yeah, with some of it.
You and me.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Yeah.
You and me. I'll, I'll be there. We will do the Canyon Mile together next school year, you and me.
Yeah, very good. Thank you so much. Yeah, for sure.
Uh, thank you for being here tonight, and let's go over to our superintendent or her superintendent's district to report.
Just a few things. Um, summer school is actually, I was going to say it started, it's almost over, um, for high school and, um, elementary school. In fact, the two principals, uh, along with Ms. Blackman, um, are the principals for summer school. Lots of, uh, you know, great things that they are doing. We're always, whenever we have summer school, we continue to look at data and see what else can we do for students so that they don't have to necessarily be making up credits and, um, really digging into that data. And then just busy every, we have a lot of folks who work over the summer to prepare for the year, including our custodians, our maintenance department, um, just, uh, maintenance operations and, um, all of that group. As long as people at the district office here, um, getting ready, ordering materials, delivering, making sure that everything is ready. And, um, and then every year we have this barbecue that we hold to thank them over the summer. And it is on July 19th, right, Amy? Um, so we would love to have you join us if you are available, uh, for barbecue at lunch. Right here, we have it right at the district office, uh, 12 to two. 12 to two. And then of course, we're busy hiring, interviewing for positions for just a couple of more positions that we have open. But that's it. Thank you.
Next part, our California School Employees Association and the Castro Valley Teachers Association reports. Ms. Kair, they are not online, so we will not be hearing either from CSEA or from CVTA. Uh, our next agenda item is public comment for items not on the agenda. Please bring forward your blue card. I will take it. It's no problem. Um, uh, oh, Chantel, please come on down and just make sure that your, your micro, your microphone is on, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Chantel Robles, and my son Anthony is in mod SDC at Proctor. The current reading curriculum used in Anthony's classroom and district-wide is unique learning systems, also referred to as ULS. If you research information on the effectiveness of ULS, you'll find that this program is not very robust or comprehensive, and many teachers who use it find it lacking content and engagement. Also, I feel it is important for you to know that this program does not meet the ELA Common Core standards. Therefore, I was very excited when I attended the CAC meeting on March 21st and listened to the SDC curriculum presentation by Breonna Hughes, who was the former AAC specialist in our district, in which she summarized her pilot study of SDC curriculums for various grade levels. One of the programs she piloted in our district was Retopia, a curriculum designed for upper elementary and above mod severe SDC classes. The results of the Retopia pilot were very positive, as documented in Breonna's presentation to the CAC. Retopia is also widely supported by literacy experts, and it's part of an ongoing study assessing its effectiveness across SDC classrooms in upper elementary to high school. Study results to date have been positive amongst T-shirts and students, and Retopia has been observed to promote student advancement in literacy and communication skills, as well as provide cognitive engagement. Since the presentation at the March CAC meeting, I've learned that the special education director has decided not to implement Retopia in place of ULS for upper elementary and above mod severe SDC classes in our district. This decision has a detrimental impact to our SDC students. I have reached out to the special education director and communicated my concerns. However, she was unwilling to propose the curriculum change to the school board for approval. Rather, she will be putting resources into attempting to supplement the current curriculum. I would prefer our district uses its resources to implement an evidence-based curriculum rather than trying to fix a broken curriculum. As a reminder, IDEA requires all students, including those with significant intellectual disability, to make progress toward grade-level general education standards, including reading. Also, Superintendent Amadi's end-of-year email had a statement which read, quote, "All students deserve robust instruction and support systems that cultivate their genius and enable them to achieve their goals," end quote. Continuing to use ULS implies that our district does not value the educational materials or experiences of students in mod severe SDC. Therefore, I ask that you uphold our district motto of "All means all" by prioritizing the needs of special education students and the importance of learning to read. Reading is, after all, one of the most functional life skills any student can learn, and all students have a right to a curriculum which supports their learning abilities. Thank you.
Thanks so much for getting through the traffic and making it here tonight to make your comments. That is a really loud, if you think I, I, I do this really loud, that was a loud alarm, but, um, thank you. Our next item is our consent agenda. Um, this is when we in one action approve many actions.
Uh, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Well, second thought.
So we have a first and a second, and before we vote on this, I would just like to take a, a brief second to acknowledge two actions that we're taking here. We are going to be, uh, renewing the superintendent's contract tonight. Uh, we're also going to be renewing the contracts of our amazing assistant superintendents, and I just want to call you out, Suzie, yeah, Emerald, and Parveen. Uh, we are blessed to have this amazing leadership team leading this district. Uh, and it is an honor and privilege to be able to, um, to renew your contracts. So shall we vote? Let's do it.
Yes. Yes, please.
Oh, sorry. Trustee, 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 trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So five, zero, uh, our consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. I just want to, um, I, I know that I share the same gratitude with the three amazing people we have here. We love working to support students, and I want to thank you for your support as well. Thank you.
Uh, so our next item is an information item, expanding multilingual options for TK through fifth grade.
So Mr. Patrick is going to actually take us through, um, they've worked, I know, Ms. Rishichi. Um, and you have worked really hard to kind of look at options. Um, so I appreciate you, your presentation and welcome.
Thank you.
He's in, he's been working all day too at summer school.
Been easy so far though. Um, so yeah, I, uh, we did some research this school year to look into different ways where we could potentially add world languages into the elementary school level, um, TK through five. During the research, we considered a whole bunch of different factors, uh, specific and not specific to elementary school. We thought about the time of day, um, and format of the classes, of course, cost of these additional classes. Who could be teaching these classes? How long would these classes be? And how frequently would we have these classes, one day or five days a week or somewhere in between? Um, I'll walk you through some of the pros and cons, uh, throughout our discussions. So with, uh, time of day, we were thinking about it could be during the school day, traditional school day structure, or we could expand out of school, um, into the after-school time. Oh, sure.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, you just see me? Oh, yeah. So, yeah. So school daytime could be within the school day or after, after school. Um, school day obviously has a lot of pros. It's a lot easier for families. We have access to all students, which means that all students have access to the programming. Um, but it does come with some cons. There's currently a lot of change happening at the elementary school level right now, which is a lot for teachers to learn and to add into their classrooms. Um, and it's, there's a lot of competition for those instructional minutes, which are minimal at the elementary level. Um, after school, there's less conflicts with time, less of that competition for instructional minutes and less demands in elementary teachers, but obviously there's less access for students. Not all students are there. We can't keep all students after school. Um, it wouldn't be a program for everybody necessarily. The format, it could be an elective where students opt into the class, or it could be a required course where all students, um, have to take it. Pros of, uh, it being an elective is there's a lot more flexibility in scheduling. It may not be the amount of classes as it would be if we're required. Um, but again, limited access. It wouldn't be for everybody. Um, if we require it, uh, some of the cons would be the cost, obviously. If every student in, in the district gets a world language class, that brings a lot more cost for teachers. Um, and then a lot of challenges trying to, um, figure out where it fits within the school day. I'm thinking about differentiation within grade levels as well. Depending on the language we offer, we'll have some native speakers. We'll have some novice speakers, all within, um, the same grade level. Then of course, thinking about teachers, we've got three real options. We could hire classified folks to do this work. We could hire certificated folks to do the work, or we could contract out through a partner organization. Um, with cla, with classified teachers, it's a lot easier to find those folks. Not as many like requirements in terms of the certificated teachers, and we have, have a lot of bilingual folks out in the community already. They do cost less, obviously, than the certificated teachers, so, um, it'd be a lower-cost program. Um, but then obviously because there's less requirements to be a classified, uh, teacher rather than a certificated, there's less rigorous requirements. Um, and then they may need more support with the curriculum and instructional delivery of that curriculum. Certificated teachers, obviously highly qualified, and they're a lot more independent. They'd need less support. But they're really hard to find, especially if we're thinking about a language like Mandarin. Um, really hard to find, uh, or certificated Mandarin teachers. Um, and then the cost is a whole lot higher. With contracted teachers, it's a lot easier for us because we don't really have to do the work finding the folks. The partner organization would find, um, them for us. They actually tend to cost quite, uh, a lot as well. And then we have less, uh, control over the teacher quality. That's more in the partner organization. And then when we're thinking about instructional times, uh, so how long the classes are, how frequent, frequent we have the classes. Obviously, the longer the classes, the more frequent, um, the higher chance of developing fluency within the students, and the greater the depth of knowledge that we can give students. Uh, but with more time is more cost, and then more competition for those instructional minutes throughout the day. So thinking about all those things, we put together a couple of options to consider and discuss. Um, option A would be, um, an option for everybody. Every elementary school student would get, uh, a, a world language class. Uh, it would be either 30 to 60 minutes in terms of class length and three to five times a week, taught by a classified staff member, and it would be a push-in into the general education, uh, day. Depending on the length and the frequency of the class, that could cost up to 700, or it could cost up to $1.4 million per year on for that program. Option B, slightly less expensive, um, again, for grades one through five. Um, but it would be a, a push-in during the school day for grades one and two, and then an opt-in program for grades three through five after school. Um, we would use classified staff for first through second grade, the push-in program. And then for third through fifth grade, we'd partner with PlayCV and, um, the polyglotist language organization as, as a potential partner. Um, and then a final option, option C, um, is starting small to build big. Um, so it would be meaning 60 minutes for a class, uh, the class length, two times a week contracted and through PlayCV after school, any students would have, um, would be able to opt into it. Um, and this would cost either 150, 1,000 per year around that or about $1,050 per, um, unduplicated or ELAP students. So the same way that we currently fund PlayCV programs, um, would, would be the cost of this program. Yeah, that's what we got.
Uh, Trustee Raymond.
But first off, thank you very much. Um, I'm glad to see that we're starting to consider an option to get, you know, particularly Mandarin into the schools. Um, I have personally have concerns if I'm looking at this through an equity lens of it being an after-school program or a push-in or an opt-in type scenario, although I also understand we have cost considerations and a looming budget crisis for the state of California that's going to impact us. Um, but I, I like that we have, um, multiple ways of looking at this. Um, and I think it would be really beneficial to our students, especially from the young age, having the exposure, uh, to, to, um, really any, any languages. Um, I'm wondering if there's been any consideration of tapping into, and I always kind of hate asking this because I don't feel like we should be depending on parent volunteers to deliver education, but I know that we do in many ways, and I've been that parent in our schools, um, for both music and art appreciation. So I, I know that we do that. Um, I'm wondering, uh, do we, has there been any consideration or are there any programs available that tap into parent volunteers, um, as a resource for providing this sort of, uh, instruction, limited instruction, um, at that level?
I haven't come across any specific programs, like for the art and music, there used to be the Fame Program. I haven't come across anything like that which caters to parent volunteers, uh, but it could be an option to either like bolster up the plans that we have here or something else that we could consider. Again, with parent volunteers, less control, less quality, all that kind of stuff.
And I, then I would also say, depending on where it is. But I, but I think if you have a program, it would be wonderful to use parent volunteers to, to augment, to help, to support, but not to actually do that.
Yeah, and I just want to add, we do have, obviously, we have parents that are interested, and, um, we have some parents that have been helping us to do some of the research and gave us a, a vast amount of resources to go and research and to figure out like what's available, what's not available, et cetera. I think what we found in some of the research, and Pat did a lot of this research. Um, but what we found was, um, post-pandemic, a lot of the resources that we had access to before, they went out of business. And so, um, we're, you know, I think we're still in that kind of recovery mode of organizations that used to be in play where we had lots more access, and now there's just not as much. But, um, we do have parent interest, and I do think that they could augment, um, easily a program to help support because they're definitely, they would want to support and have the language capabilities, most definitely.
Oh, I have some questions and opinions. I, I really like option A if we're going to do any of these. Uh, I think that, that's, to me, the most equitable. It is, I will also note, uh, Trustee Whitaker, the most expensive. And I will also note that the, the state budget's not looking good, but it doesn't mean we can't think about and plan these things out. Okay, so here are my unsolicited opinions about all this stuff. I'm still jealous of all my German friends who like were starting their second language when they started middle school in Germany. Oh, sorry, their third language, right? Um, I am concerned that, to me, and I don't know if there's literature out here to support this, but I would be, I would think like you would almost want to prioritize the upper elementary grades. Uh, and then also talk about what's our strategy for kids in middle school? Because having a gap to me is a real problem. I don't like the idea of, of, of getting these kids turned on to a second language and then whoops, nothing there for them once they get to middle school. So that's maybe, maybe that's not the right way of thinking it, because I know the younger you start a language, the better, right? Uh, I do think there's a cultural exchange component to this, which I know as an unincorporated community and as a school district, we often take on the burden of a lot of things. One thing I benefited from was from a sister city association where I got to spend summers in Germany, and that's how I learned the language. So I would just, I know that's like a long way from here, but I think that could be a component of it as we look for allies and look for support. And I'm wondering if there aren't any like foundations out there who maybe support this type of, of curriculum being introduced into schools and maybe could help pay for some of it as well. So those are all my ideas.
Ties back into Nia's comment. Um, the organization that we used prior to the pandemic was the organization that helped independent, uh, like, uh, get a sister school partnership together.
Yeah.
We used to bring stu, we brought students to Castro Valley, uh, from China to spend some time.
That's great.
Never brought kids over there, but that was a possibility. But that organization just disappeared.
So I just want to admit I annoy myself because like I have all these other like big ideas. Like I think this can open up a conversation about, um, larger cultural exchanges and like language in general in our schools. And I, I would, I think we, we talked about how CVUSD is a, um, we're, we're a destination district. People want to work here. People want to be in our schools. And I think any way to differentiate ourselves through language learning would be a great thing. What I really like, because it looks like we're talking about Mandarin here, and you're looking at those values we talk about here. And we're talking about how we want to meet, meet our populations, you know? Uh, we, we have our, our DLI program in Spanish, and I think leaning into Mandarin would be a really great thing as well, uh, to lean into our large, uh, Mandarin-speaking population. So I'm excited about this.
Yeah. I, so I have a question. As you were, um, as you were speaking about like middle school and upper grade. So maybe our next kind of step is to, again, keep looking at this. But what would it, I guess we would have to look at, what would it mean? We still have the same pros and cons about instructional minutes, right? Like fourth and fifth grade starting, right? Not necessarily K one, two, three, like fourth and fifth grade starting so that when they move into, and then, because once they've done that, then they would want to be in language classes in, uh, middle school. But so maybe we can kind of look at like different ways and different things that we could do for not necessarily K five, but starting at a certain grade and then going down.
Trustee Howard. And then Trustee Adams. It's President Hobbs.
So this is all good. I'm really happy that you're evaluating various possibilities. They're all expensive, as you told me the other day. And this is a tight budget year for sure. But the other, I think there are other, uh, other, uh, issues that are going to have to be taken on here in a way. And for example, as you said, in the secondary schools, you were, back a few years ago, we had a year-long study about the A to G requirements and the potential of adding a seventh period. And the conclusion of that was that we probably, well, we weren't going to do A to G, that's for sure. But there was considerable concern among the, the teachers about adding a seventh period because how much more, you know, but it's sort of like putting 10 pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag. How much can our students take in this, you know? Uh, so I think there are concerns about that, about how would we fit all this stuff in that we would really like them to be able to do, all their English, their math, their science, their social studies, art, and so forth, that we really would like to introduce them to, and now we'd really like to do language as well. So how do we squeeze all that in, into a day, just literally there? So that's another aspect this, I think, that's going to be difficult at some point. But I think, I still think, you know, the goal here is for all students to graduate from Castro Valley with two languages. English, hopefully, but also something else. And the other side of this, one more comment I'll make is that we also owe our Spanish-speaking students and our Chinese-speaking students, you know, uh, they need to learn the king's Spanish and the emperor's Chinese, I guess you would say, but they need to know how to speak properly. And that's why we have kids in English for 13 years, hoping they can speak English properly. But they need to know how to speak properly, and that's why we have kids in English for thirteen years, hoping they can speak English properly. And we, it'd be good to be able to teach our very large Spanish-speaking population the King's Spanish. So if they do that right too, we can't ignore them. So it's a difficult problem, but it's a great thing to work on, so thank you for working on it.
Well, I'm trustee Howard, I'm sure my friend from Argentina would, would argue that Argentinian Spanish is the, is the King's Spanish. Vice President Adams.
So kind of adding on a little bit to what Gary said there. I remember when we had to take our clad. One of the things is, is to, you know, there are many children who can speak Spanish fluently, but they don't know how to read and write it. So this would really get that going at a younger age, which would really make them truly bilingual. I think I'm for maybe starting this at the upper grade levels, like Michael's, Mr. Kuziak, trustee Kuziak said. I know one of the first jobs I ever had was being a science prep teacher over there at Fairview Elementary. And that was until they had a budget cut and cut the, cut it out. But they, that was really good. And the kids, by the way, too, and I would bet you this would happen with this too, is they get a chance to have another teacher and have another experience with somebody else. And so they really looked forward to science prep, and I bet you they would look really forward to Spanish or, and Mandarin prep. I'm really happy that we're talking about doing something here with Mandarin, like trustee Raymond said. And I just would like to say that, believe it or not, in the tiny little town of two thousand five hundred that I went to school in, we had Spanish starting in seventh grade for half of the class, for those who chose it. So I was taking that when I was in seventh and eighth grade, then went to high school, and of course, they had it in high school. And we had it every day. So that was seventh grade, it'd be really nice to see this in like fourth, fifth, sixth, yeah.
Trustee Whitaker.
Well, I know we're talking about different grades and all those things, but I recall us talking about when language is introduced at younger ages, what it does to the brain and what the science result is. So I hear the rest of the board, and yes, I'm worried about the budget, so what might we do? I'm very scared about the one point oh seven percent COLA next year. And can you speak a little bit more to the benefits of starting earlier?
So I don't know if I can speak to that properly off the top of my head, but.
So the research that we did regarding the, when we were doing the research on the dual-language immersion program for Spanish, all of the research pointed to the earlier you start, the more you, you, you have the better option of the goal of making sure that our students become bilingual, bilingual, and bicultural in the language of choice. And so I, but I, I appreciate the, all of the competing priorities that we're dealing with when it comes to, like, we've got constraints around the budget, we know that that doesn't look great. But also, we, we have this desire to really make sure that our students have this, you know, more broad course of study. So I think that one of the things that we can do is continue to just, you know, think through. You all have given us some more additional information and ideas to think about. But starting at the earlier levels, really, if we want the language to solidify and we want our students to become bilingual, bilingual, bicultural, we really have to start at the earliest stages.
When we were looking at this, so option A, K five, thirty to sixty minutes, A.
So three to five times a week.
Three times, so that's another thing, like looking at different models. You don't have to have three to five times a week because we don't have enough instructional minutes. As a teacher, I'm like, I got to teach math and reading and da, 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 da. So just what's really important for us is that you would, this is something you want us to keep thinking about. And then when there's an opportunity and there's some funding that we can actually kind of get started. And I have to say, although, you know, we, when we were talking about like starting at four or five, absolutely. If you start when a child is born, it's so much better. That's why a lot of people think about like teaching sign language to little, to babies, right? But, but I think even K five or first to five, just like our art and music, right? Different ways of looking at it. So we know you're interested, we know what the challenges are, and we'll just keep looking at it.
I, I do have kind of a, it's mission creep, but it's related. So I know some parents, for example, were looking to have Arabic at the high school. And I just want to acknowledge as someone who learned German that oftentimes our American high schools have a deference to Western European languages. And when you think about like, you know, Africa's going to be a pretty big place in about twenty or forty years. You know, how do we evaluate like, could there be an African language that we could, we could promote at the high school level or within like our elementary schools? I like the idea that we are leaning into our Chinese-speaking community and also our Spanish-speaking community with DLI. And I just wonder if we ever look back and think about what's the right mix of languages? I know we can't be a small little college with like a million different language options. I think it's pretty amazing what Castro Valley High School offers. But I just, I wanted to think in terms of like the demographics of our, of our students and like what is the appropriate mix of languages and the languages that we're feeding kids into. Trustee Whitaker.
To that point, I mean, if we're setting our kids up for success, you know, to be adults that are integrated into the need and the demand, the languages that are spoken business, right? If we're talking about the UN, it's French and English. If we're talking about the energy industry, you have to know Russian and Arabic, right? There's certain key industries that speak more languages. And so if we're going to be considered that, I'd like us to consider that component as well.
Well, I just, yeah, I just want to thank you for, for all of your work and research and, and all of this. It's, it's a really good place to be. We know what we want, we just have to kind of look at when we can make it possible. Thank you, great job, as always.
Our next item is eight B, update on California School Dashboard Local Indicators 2023 to 2024. Action on this.
Good evening, board members and cabinet members, and we do have some caregivers, our educational partners in the audience. Tonight, I have the pleasure of really talking a little bit about our local indicators. You have been exposed to the indicators before, but I just want to do a couple of reminders. So we have eleven dashboard indicators. Six of those are state indicators, five are local indicators. We are only focused on the five local indicators for tonight. And just a couple of reminders about those local indicators. So the local indicators measure performance that in some of the state priority areas, that the state doesn't collect data on. They don't have data on it, so they ask school districts to look at their local data, and they give us some parameters to work within. And only school districts have local indicators, that's not for counties, et cetera. And we have to establish whether we've met or did not meet in those five areas. So, and the last two things, a district meets each of the indicators when we report out to the board at a regularly scheduled board meeting like we're doing tonight, that we measure the progress and that we then, after tonight's meeting, we would upload our results to the dashboard. So those are all requirements. And then you have a little reminder for priority two, that's why I put this little piece of paper. For priorities two, academic standards, and priorities three, parent engagement. We have five levels that we kind of self-reflect on, and it's exploration for the audience. It's exploration and research phase, which is one level, beginning development, which is level two, initial implementation, which is level three, full implementation, which is level four, and then full implementation and sustainability, which is level five. So that's just to make sure folks know that we have some different levels that we have to kind of self-assess on. So without further ado, on priority one, basics, we have definitely met this local indicator. We do have, we have no misassignment of teachers, all of our students have their instructional materials, and on the FIT report, all of our schools were rated as exemplary. So we've definitely met that. For academic implementation, priority two, implementation of academic standards and implementation of other adopted academic standards, you'll notice that we have both fours and fives in most of the areas. I'm going to go back to implementation of academic standards because you'll notice that we do have a few threes, and those threes are on our implementation. We scored ourselves as initial implementation for English language development. It's an area that we, we have done some good work in, but we know we have to do deeper level work in. We now have a director, a new director of multilingual learners, and we're very excited for the work that Doris De La Torre, our new director, has already started to work on. So we'll be doing a deeper dive into more robust professional development for our teachers. We will do, be doing monthly professional learning with our principals. And then at our three Title I schools and our newcomers program that's at Canyon, we will be doing more work there, kind of deeper level work there, because that's where we have a larger number of our multilingual learners. So that is our kind of succinct plan of action. And we believe that by next year, for the local indicators, we'll be able to have a four there for full implementation. So that's for academic examiners who we have met. Then we have parent engagement, and we do, as you know, a lot of work around parent engagement. There's a list up there on the screen about some of the committees that we have. We have parent listening sessions. We did newly this year, we created, I'm sorry, we delivered site-level presentations. So all of the site principals delivered LCAP presentations to all their communities. So we do a lot of work around parental development. There are three areas that the state asks us to give feedback on and write, do a narrative write-up on. In building relationships, building partnerships for student outcomes, and then also seeking input for decision-making. So there you see, in both, in all three of those, we are fours and fives, either full implementation or full implementation is sustainability. So in their parent engagement, we have done a lot of work. We pride ourselves on the outreach that we do, the listening sessions that we do to make sure that we're hearing from our parents and really listening to what they're saying, taking in their stories and their counter-stories, and really listening to the experiences that they have those so we can improve our practice. But we always feel like we have more work to do, and so overall, we've met that particular. We'll go back to this, overall, we've met the parent engagement local indicator, but we always feel like we have more work to do. All right, so then the last two, priority area six, school climate. We have just been talking about the California Healthy Kids Survey. We do that every other year, we just did it, we just conducted it with students, the parents and staff last December of 2023, and we're currently looking at that data. The requirement is that the LEA administers a local climate survey at least every other year that provides a valid measure of perceptions of school safety and connectedness. And so we use that, that we use the California Healthy Kids surveys, most school districts do. And so we've met that particular local indicator. And then last but not least, we have access to a broad course of study. And folks say, so what does that really mean? And the state really hasn't, still hasn't defined what a broad course of study really means. And so the language from the state says, local educational agencies, school districts, annually measure their progress in the extent to which students have access to and enrolled in a broad course of study that includes the adopted courses of study, including the programs and services developed and provided to unduplicated students and individuals with exceptional needs. That still doesn't say a lot. So we tend to look at our career technical education courses, our A through G offerings, our program planning guides, provide our students with a lot of information about graduation and A through G requirements. We have definitely implemented the Common Core standards, and we provide a lot of social, emotional, anti-bias, and anti-racism curriculum. And we have our dual-language immersion program, and we have more and more and more programs. So we provide our students with access to a broad course of study, and we have met that, this local indicator. And the state is promising to continue to get more and more information out about what they mean by a broad course of study. But school districts have been using similar, similar, similar data to determine if they've met that local indicator. So last is, overall, we've met the five local indicators. If the board has any questions, happy to answer those, but otherwise, we would ask for your approval. And then we would upload, our next step would be if the board approves, we would then go ahead and upload our information into the dashboard.
I would like to move approval of the update to the California School Dashboard Local Indicators for 2324.
I'll second that.
You have a one and a two, trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes, that is five zero, yes, you may now upload it to the internet. Thank you. Our, our next item is adopt the 2024, 2025 Local Control Accountability Plan, also known as LCAP. This is an action item.
We did the public hearing last time, so and we had a presentation and any questions?
So that means we can entertain a motion.
I'll move approval to adopt the 2425 Local Control Accountability.
I'm going to second it because my microphone's on and I never do second motions. So trustee Raymond. Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I will say yes, it's passed five to zero. And now for the big event, eight D, adopt the 2024, 2025 Budget.
Yes, thank you. Yes, so we did the presentation last, last, last meeting. Also, it was also a public hearing, so we, this is up for adoption. But before you do that, I do have a, a couple of things that I wanted to, to just share about the state budget. We're still waiting for the final approval from the legislature. So, but there is a budget deal by the governor, senate, and the assembly that solves the forty-six point eight billion deficit. And so this is actually a really positive thing for us to, to hear that really not only balances the 2425, but also looks at 2526, which is good. It's a couple, a couple of years that they really looked at in terms of budget solutions. So this includes with a forty-six point eight billion solution, sixteen billion dollars in program reductions statewide, thirteen point six billion in increased revenues that they're anticipating. Use of reserves that I've shared with you at the May revise, that they've, that they, it was proposed at that time, shifting some funds, about six billion dollars. There is now a deferral. I know that at May revise, deferrals is not something that they, they propose, but with this budget deal, we're looking at deferrals. And we experienced that a few years ago, and so now it's back on. So I'll, I'll share more information in August when we have all of the information from the enacted budget.
So trustee Raymond. Oh, we should do motions first and if we have questions, right?
I'll move approval to adopt the 2024, 25 Budget.
Trustee Raymond, do you want to do the second? But yeah.
Yeah, I'll second it, but do you have a question?
And I have a question after you. No, you go first, you go first.
Okay. Stupid question, but this is the place to ask it. So is this not quite as catastrophic as we were thinking it was a few weeks ago?
It is still, we still, yeah. We still have the deficit, right? So we, that we, that we knew about back in January because of the, the taxes that didn't come in as, as that they estimated. So it is, but there are some measures that they put in place, right? Things, budget solutions, like I mentioned, cutting categorical programs and other programs that, that they were proposing then the next few years, and now they're actually pulling back because those are funds that are not, that have not been disbursed. So they still have the money, and so they're just pulling back on, on, on those things. So we are still in a, in a, you know, we still need to be very careful because there is, they, they've put in a sixteen points, thirteen point six billion in increased revenue. We don't have all that information as far as where that is coming from, sixteen points, thirteen point six billion. And so we, that's why we're waiting for additional information. Once we get that, then we can kind of gauge to see, is that going to come in? Are we now thinking about what, because we need to be very careful about what happened last year, why it got us here, right? So of the additional, of the revenue that they estimated, that we will get from the taxes that didn't actually come in. So here we go again, with this budget solution of another thirteen point six billion dollars of increased revenue, but we don't necessarily know where that is going to come from yet at this time. We don't have all the details yet.
And if you could just really briefly help educate me, deferrals.
Yes, so, yes, so a good example, what happened a couple of years ago. Yes. So, yes, so a good example, what happened a couple of years ago during COVID, actually. What they, what the governor did is that he deferred. And this happens when, when we go through this budget crisis, right? So a good, a good example that I can, I can share is that our June, we, we are apportionment, state apportionment comes in monthly at the end of the month. So one of the things that they've done for many years, including the, the one that, that happened three years ago, is they actually deferred the June apportionment. So our last apportionment for the fiscal year. What they did is instead of getting it at the end of the month, they actually gave it to us the very next day. So what happens at the state level is they don't account for that money until the following year. But for us, we're able to accrue that we are, you know, that we're, we'll get that apportionment. It's just not the cash. And so that is one way for them to, to actually that, the liability pushes it out another year. Yes.
I was gonna say, so would it be, really, the way I think about it is it was bad. And then it was going to be worse with the maneuver saying we're gonna lower the bend, the prop ninety-eight. And now that's not there.
Correct. Yes. So back to bad, not worse, not really bad.
Vice President Adams, then trustee Howard. Oh, I thought you did. Trustee Howard.
So is, are they only talking about one month on that? Because the last time we did this, it was multiple months. And we were putting in contingency plans to borrow money from.
Yes. Yes, three, three point six billion dollars is what they are deferring. So June, our June at the end of the month will now be paid next month. Yes, that's, yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
So it's not as bad, but it's still an estimated one point oh seven percent COLA.
That's correct, yes.
On schedule.
Yes, yes, fully funding the one point oh seven.
Which is not even close to inflation.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to follow up on, I, I'm happy everyone's talking about deferrals because I think at one point, was it three or four years ago? Because I, I know during the Great Recession, districts did these like quasi bonds, like deferral sort of. We're not in that space. We're just dealing, right? So that's, that's good to know. It does seem like the state in any, in some ways is kicking the can, hoping that something gets better. And then the thing I remind myself, unlike many of our neighboring districts, we're actually a, you know, slightly growing district, so we're not seeing our ADA go down. So that, that's helpful for us in managing this. And I feel really bad for our colleagues in surrounding districts that have to manage the downward trajectory. Trustee Whitaker.
Yeah, but when you look at the funding for us, our per pupil funding isn't the same as our surrounding districts, right? So it's like what we get per pupil is still a lot less than our neighbor and neighbors in Hayward, right? So we don't have the leg room that some other districts have. And we've spent down our reserve. So we're at a point where this is, you know, I, I'm worried that we're gonna have to make some tough decisions if things don't change.
And I can imagine, like, I wonder if anyone in, in your, in your role, like, does an analysis of the reserves across the state? I can't imagine many districts are, are doing well with their reserves. And it's, it's, it's probably a broader collective issue at this point.
Yeah. So a couple of years ago, when we received the influx of one-time funds, right? So that's what we're seeing now is actually they're showing the last few years of an increase in reserves. But now the concern is just because all that money is gone. So now it's starting to, you're really seeing the actual, what, what it looks like because it's just gonna be the bare minimum. So you're gonna see a, a, a report of, of districts will be struggling because of this one point oh seven percent. We've heard a lot of districts are cutting because of this. Okay, three point nine, from three point nine four percent down to one point oh seven, that's, that's huge.
I was gonna add something. So in, in our district, we actually used all those one-time funds. So Susie is sending updates to the state for exactly what they were meant for. So what really worries me is that because there are districts that didn't do that and it still have, they still have. And they were talking about taking some, some of these back, like ELAB, right? For some districts that haven't used their money because they already had other ways of, they already had that program. So one of the things actually I think they're doing is like pulling some of that money back. But the one-time funds for COVID, some people still have that left sitting there. And so to answer your question, mostly they should be in the same place we are. But if they haven't spent that money and they're gonna have to spend it within like, you know, a short amount of time, then they're gonna be in the same place.
Trustee Howard.
This is actually aspersions on a different district, but San Francisco Unified has a budget deficit this year of a hundred and forty-nine million dollars. Their budget deficit.
That's our budget.
Higher than our budget.
I just have one, one final question. I mean, I don't, I think you may have addressed this and I apologize, it was such a long meeting and I was back east when I was here for it. I know that they've removed the funding for TK spaces and renovations and building. And I, the, the thing I was reading is that the legislature is looking to put, put that essentially as a bond measure now. So how, operationally, what, how would that work? Would we have to apply? Would they be like matching funds to get that for those resource needs, for those space needs?
It depends. Yeah. So what, what, so currently for, in order for us to get proper fifty-one funds is to actually apply for it. So we would need to, yes. So for the next bond, it would probably be the same, the same. So how we receive the additional twenty million dollars towards our, all of our, our projects is because we applied for every single one of them. Modernization, including this TK facilities, if it's going to be included in the, in the next one.
Well, so planning for, I know that we're doing a big TK expansion next year. It's, it's going out, how many, will all the sites have TK next year?
Not yet.
Two.
Yeah.
Do, I will, how, how does that impact our ability, you know, with those funds being removed from this year's budget? Are we able to manage somehow?
We, we are, we're able to manage and we actually work really closely with Ed Services, our sites. Once we identify the sites that we are going to have TK, we do work with facilities department as well to identify classrooms that, to meet the requirements. So we are good for next year, but you know, it's always good to get the additional funding because what we're using are our existing classrooms. So we're having to shift some of our grade levels to, to meet that requirement so we can have the, the facility for our TK.
Are there any more questions or comments? I, I do think your role is one of the toughest jobs in California, being a budget officer for a school district. The way we do things is like backwards, so I don't, I don't know how you do it. So thank you for all of your hard work. So let's, we, we have taken a first and a second so we can vote. Trustee Raymond.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Whitaker. Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes, we have adopted five zero, the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget. And with that, let's go to our board members for comments and reports. Trustee Raymond.
I really haven't got anything to report.
Yeah. Trustee Whitaker.
I have also not represented the district since we last met.
Trustee Howard.
A couple of things. Last week I visited the summer school at Marshall and spent some time with Patrick Hanson Smith, who is just here. And it's going very well over there. It's smaller than has been, this is the elementary summer school. Smaller than has been in the past, but going very well. And they're well-staffed, certainly. I was impressed by the number of adults in their each room. They're really very good coverage there and a bunch of high school students also who are helping out over there. It's very good. And today I was at the high school, visiting the custodians and then over at Creekside doing the same thing. And they are, as usual, working very hard and they do a great job. And it's fantastic to hang around with them a bit, so, thanks.
Vice President Adams.
I just have one thing, there was a SIPA meeting on June seventeenth. We had representatives from all four districts, Castor Valley, Hayward, San Leandro, San Lorenzo. Our, the San Lorenzo Director of Special Ed, Rochelle Hooks, that we know is leaving, going to San Mateo. I think she has gotten a promotion, so, or maybe it's lateral, I'm not quite, I don't, I just put San Mateo. And then let's see, things, what else is going on here? Oh, our Susie Williams is working, doing a special project in San Lorenzo. And then, let's see, in Hayward, they were working on some transportation things and surplus property. They're very happy about the approval of their Measure I bond. So that was really good. And then that's really about all the notes I have on that meeting that might pertain to us of people we know or whatnot.
I don't really have anything to update. I want to thank Ms. Kaier for facilitating my ability to participate in last, our last meeting when I was in DC. I don't know if I showed this, but I did make it a point when I was driving into DC for, for my meetings. I was on there for a work meeting. The Creekside eighth graders were at Pentagon City Mall in their buses. And I like stopped by and I said hi to them as they were about to go off to Mount Vernon. So it was really great to see a little bit of Castor Valley outside of DC as I was there and wish them a, a great trip. So with that, it seems like we've been meeting a lot despite it being the summer. But with that, let me just adjourn our meeting and say thank you, everyone for being here tonight. Have a great few weeks.